Order the two Jaguars State Board session for the Dayton City Council.
Wonderful, thank you Mayor and members of council. We have all the department heads here to go through budget again. We are kind of wrapping up with stuff with discussion talks with the budget. We did CIP for the last two meetings. To kind of get our hands around equipment needs, capital facility needs, so on and so forth that are capital related. And now we will talk about the operational side of things and bringing them all together. We did have presentations back in June. I know it's been a little bit of time since then to kind of go through what the requests are going to be this year. And they are all in front of you and provided prior to this meeting to you, so you had a chance to review them. And I guess what we'll do is I'll just kind of go through as best I can, just summarize in the budget changes from 23 to 24. And then we'll go through if you have any questions from council and or department heads related to those. We can talk and discuss about them. Otherwise, their bottom total was all was given to on the last page of the budget changes number. And is on the screen right in front of you right now. And that total increase requested next year is just short of 1.7 million and it is 100% related to operations of the city. There are no capital equipment increases in this budget based on the CIP needs at the time that we are looking at. What dollars we have currently established for CIP needs in the future, at least in next year's budget. And the following year's budget may be a different discussion, but at this point, there are no needs for capital equipment. Unless we're looking at long term, longer than next year's needs of trying to ramp up increased reserves, so. We will start with, again, looking at operations, 1.7 million, breaking down. The revenue side is all handled by myself. As the finance director, I look at revenues to figure out where we're at. And the biggest into we've seen in total is building permit revenue being down. Last year we budgeted 1.2 million as in 2023. We are not going to hit that number, I'll tell you that right now. With current interest rates, we are well short of that. So we will should be able to still cover our expenses. However, we are not going to make up the revenue number, so. We will have to make sure that we are lower on the expense side, which we will be, just might not be to the point of what we're looking at in total, so. There'll be continued discussions about what we do in 23 to make sure that we come up with that revenue number or somehow adjust something to reduce expenses or something to make that happen, but.
I got a question. Court fines contingent on officer, what does that mean?
Yep.
We don't have the officer, they don't go up.
Correct, exactly. So the court fines are based on the traffic cop. So if the traffic cop in this is rated on roughly a 50% margin. So 50% of the new officer would be paid for by court fines or by speeding, traffic violations, parking, whatever. Champlin's currently operates at 100%, and that's not what we're looking at doing. But this would be the ability to handle traffic and half of that salary would be covered by court fines. That is what that means. If we do not have the officer, roughly, a rough officer is 120 to 140,000, somewhere in there. So I guess that's $60,000 increase for court fines. So you reduce 60,000 on revenues if we don't get the officer. And then we reduce 120,000.
On wage.
On wages, yep. So positive $60,000 adjustment in reality. Again, we don't know how much it's going to be, our guess. If we used, again, if we use and say, yep, it's going to be 100% covered by court fines and all the fees and and tickets and whatever are going to be written by this officer is going to cover their salary. And we don't make it, then we have a shortfall. So I'd rather be conservative and say, yep, we're only going to cover half. If it covers more, then great, we now we know in the future how much it's going to really be because we don't really have a clue. We don't, we don't really know. So, but building permit revenue is the biggest one. That's $325,000 decrease year over year. Again, that has to be made up somehow because those revenues are then made up in expenses. So if we don't have the revenues, we have to either lower expenses or.
But some of the taxes are coming in on some of them commercial buildings.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, in 25. It's a little bit in 24, most of them are going to be in 25. Just based on the build rate that they're at. I mean, they started late in 22, so if there's anything, it's very, very minimal in 24.
So very reflective of capacity.
Yeah, it's minimally reflected in the capacity, but basically they're, the county's looking at capacity numbers. So your valuation is established January 1 of the previous year for the following year. So January 1 of 23 is when they're looking for 24 valuations. So January 1 of 24 is when they'll establish 25 valuations. So our commercial building didn't really have a lot going on. Maybe the CRG building, but that's the millions worth of one, but other than that, wasn't a lot out of the ground at that time.
So the building permit revenue being down.
Yep.
I think over the past couple of years, we've adjusted that revenue. And I thought we were pretty close to matching the expenses.
Pretty close, yep.
For those.
Correct.
So what expenses do we still have for that being down?
So we will have, still have the, basically the planning staff. We still have those salaries.
Sure.
Those will always be into the building permit revenue, so we have some of it. It is still a decrease though, so we will reduce professional services on the inspection side of things. Not one to one, but.
So.
Well, one to two or something.
What should have happened with those, it'd be nice to see this, is we have, and this is why we got into trouble with the volume.
Yep.
Is we have fixed costs and then we have to scale the cost.
Skilled revenue, yep.
Yep, I've never seen that broken down. And it'd be nice to know that because then we know where we're at with fees.
Yep.
Where they should be and where we can get into trouble when we, when the bottom falls out.
Sure. I will say that I worked with Baker Tilly again, and I think we finished it up just at the end of last month.
Okay.
So just like two weeks ago.
With?
With Baker Tilly, with the new reconciliation, basically with 22 numbers.
Okay.
I'm going to work with him to get up to date 23 numbers. And then we can share that with the council and say, here's where we're at per permit based on our breakdown. And yeah, that includes overhead and other costs of, you know, how much are we really, quote unquote, making or not making out of permit? Because we're not making hardly anything anymore. We were maybe making money at one time because of the valuations and just sheer number, but.
The sheer number, right?
If we have 400, there's no way we can budget for having 400 expense, just as possible. But a normal year like this, normal year, somewhere around 100, then we're fine. Just because of sheer number of volume, you end up having some sort of, there's always some sort of difference in the expenses and revenues. There's no way to get them perfect. And so when you have more of them, it just expands that difference. Whereas if you have less of them, then that makes it much tighter or negative, depending on what it is.
There's a crossover.
Correct.
We adjusted some of the permits as well to go from a flat rate instead of off evaluation.
Correct, yep.
So that's some of the decrease as well.
Yeah, so like decks.
Say it wasn't like the deck permit, remodeling and stuff.
Yep, remodels are all based on.
Yeah, those were the big ones that make up probably 90, 95% of the volume are the new ones.
Correct, correct. So again, it's not a direct 100% change in the budget, but it is something to do with it. And it's probably 100 or probably 150 to 200,000 difference in revenue changes or in total net costs of inspections versus revenues. Of that net change. So we have to make that up with taxes somehow because that pays for planning departments, other part of their time. And also we have inspections going on with Marty's job and Metro West. We still have to pay them to do inspections. You know, we may not make any money on a deck permit because it's fixed fee and they have to go out there three times. And pay them $75 an hour to go out there three times, that's.
Anyway, we should fix that.
Very well could, yep. And so that's something we can adjust part of the fee schedule too. So that's the next, we'll have that conversation later on. But in total, building permit revenue down 325,000. State aid is related to police state aid, fire state aid, and then municipal state aid that we get for roadways. Those are all up, roughly at $53,000. And that by MSA dollars, I mean the maintenance of streets, not related to the municipal state that we get for roadways. Because those are all going currently to pay off our draw on the Pine View project that we did. So we pulled five years advance allocation on the Pine View project, and I've been slowly paying that back. So next year, I think is year four or five. Yes, for pullback on the Pine View project. So we will see those dollars eventually come back. And those can then go into our pavement management fund as well.
Getting back to the building permit revenue being down, how much did you allocate back to a tax burden?
I would say probably 100 and, like I said, I think the net's about $150,000.
Okay.
Net difference between reduced expenditures and then reduced revenues. So they net out to be about $150,000 difference in tax levy burden that has to go back on the tax roll for those additional items. Again, that's my best guess. I could be way off, or I could be way short, depending on what happens. Interest rates at this way they are, I don't, everyone I've talked to says they're not going to go down, so I'm assuming that we'll have the similar activity we did this year, next year. But again, I can't predict the future and I don't know anybody that can. Any questions on revenue changes overall? Interest is up 40,000, so the reason why that's up is because the interest rates are higher. So we can invest in higher interest rates when we're investing our dollars, which is a good thing for us. And we are earning more interest, which is a good thing. However, it may not be there forever, but we're doing our best to ladder them and make sure we can get as much interest as possible. Any questions on revenues? Doesn't sound like it. Okay. So what I did by expense side is I went through each department and if they had a change greater than 20,000, I included them. I did include however, the committees department, and the reason why is because for whatever reason, we were incorrectly budgeting for all the committee members paying them $25 a meeting. I don't know how we miscalculated that number. I'm not sure based on $25 a meeting times by 15 meatball times by 12 months. Should be a pretty simple calculation, however, we don't do it. I will verify that number. The reason why I put it in there is because like I said, it didn't make any sense when I looked at it again, and I said, that doesn't make any sense to me. But I'll look at it again and verify before I say that that's for sure the right number, but.
So we weren't budgeting at all, or we were off budget by 6,200?
Correct, we were off budget by 6,200. Not sure why, getting me, might have, some people don't get paid and now people are getting paid because we're switching over planning, or planning parks.
And previously we had more that were unpaid.
Unpaid, yep. So now we have more that are paid, so it's again, it's a small number amount, but it's something to be noted worth while. Election Department, that's up 30,000 for elections happening in 24. This is from Amy, and the reason why is because of all the changes that happened with the 23 legislative session. Being open more hours, having to be on more time, trying to get people, have to pay them a higher rate now because there's just no way to get people to do head judge work, election judge work for $10.
Historically, it was the retired people who would come in and kind of do a civic duty. And they actually didn't want to make more than the $500 or $600, whatever it is, so it wouldn't mess with their taxes. And now we have the younger generation who wants to get more involved and then even the older generation that's willing to make more than that because
Doesn't pay for their time.
Just want to get paid.
Yeah, it doesn't pay for their time. So I don't remember what we increased it to, but it was 17, I think.
There's a lot of extra hours.
So you have to be open earlier now, right, too?
Earlier.
More days and more hours and Sundays and overtime and, yeah.
So two additional Saturdays, a Sunday. Two of the days in each election, we have to be open until 7:00 PM. And then the Saturday hour is extended. Instead of five hours, it's six hours. So yeah, there's quite a bit of additional time.
So that's election department, that's $30,000. Finance Department, this is related to the rearrangement of city hall staff. With the accountant that we have on board now, that's 100% related to finance and the accounting technician that we have related to finance as well. And then also rearrangement of my time related to finance, too, with the fact that I'm now city administrator, then I also am part of the finance team still, so. Increase in wages and benefits, 143,000. We did not budget for that accounting technician position, so that is included in that 143. Last year we hired them and said, yep, we're going to be able to make it up with the decreased salaries and rearrangement of the city administrator. But we also have the community development director position that we had budgeted for, and now we have budgeted again this year too, so. I didn't know what we were going to do with that position and we had budgeted for both of those positions and then not account for the accounting technician in the 2023 budget. So that is why the change is that. Any questions on finance? Assessment services, it is a substantial increase with Hennepin County. I am unsure why. I wish I could argue that fact that I don't want to pay $55,000 more for their services next year for assessments. But based on, I don't know if it's staff time or their rate that they're charging us or it doesn't make any sense for us to pull it in-house to do assessment services in-house, which basically means payoffs and calculations and running schedules and it just doesn't pay us for us to do it. It's a $55,000 increase to keep with.
So we can do it in-house?
We, I don't know if we can with Hennepin County, but.
This is in total the assessor service though, isn't it?
Correct, yes.
So I think it is a year behind and we're paying more because of the increase in permits that we had.
Sure.
Because they go through each new home and have to put a valuation on it, so.
Yeah, it's assessment assessor.
I think it will decrease as permits decrease. So you could have an in-house assessor.
And the county accepts those values? I mean.
I think so.
Yeah, there is, you have to be a certified assessor.
Certification.
And then, yes.
Why can't we pull up with some of the local municipalities and get that?
We could, depending on what their contract is, I don't know. Every community is different based on number of homes and.
Hennepin County.
Yeah, number of homes and number of assessments that you have outstanding and how many times you do assessments per year.
What's the total amount for increasing by 55?
$190,000.
With this or before this?
With this.
$190,000.
Last year was 140, 100, well, it would have been 135 last year.
How could it possibly cost us that much?
I don't know. I can't. I just get the number from Hennepin County and go, okay.
You can get a full-time employee for, even with benefits, for two-thirds of that.
Yeah. I can ask for more information, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't. We do have quite a few, I mean, we have quite a few assessments out there that are still running schedules. I mean, we did a lot of assessments back in.
Yeah, I can tell you that Hennepin County, there's at least four people working for us. I mean, I don't know.
Full-time?
Full-time, but I think a significant amount of time.
Yeah, that's a big area, isn't it? I mean, we're just talking about Dayton.
Yeah, so it's 190,000, our contract's $190,000 a year.
Cool, there's somebody who knew the idea.
Doing it in-house?
You can get a person for under a hundred grand to do that.
Not, not that I'm aware of. I think most of them use Hennepin County. I don't know of any other communities that are not using Hennepin County for their assessment slash assessor services. But I can most certainly ask, and it doesn't hurt to ask, again, I got the number, put it in the system as, here's the budget number and said, okay. I don't know how to argue this, and I got a response back then, here, this is what your contract number is.
Well, the other, the other piece to that is then we're not defending their numbers. I mean, right now, when they come with these 30% increases.
They're just throwing the dirt at the walls all they're doing.
We, yeah, I don't know how that would work, like I said. They, as far as I know, they did most of the communities in Hennepin County. I don't think it's even a choice. I mean, that's why I could, I could ask. Certainly, that's something that the council wants to do, I can certainly request.
I would at least ask and maybe surf around and see if anybody else is doing it because I just think they, they do a crappy job. It just seemed like there was a lot of, over the years, there's been a lot of darts on the wall.
Yeah. There's no real rationale on how they get a 20% increase over a 8% increase.
Yeah, that comes from the state, so I don't know how that really works, that increase. So from what we gathered from Hennepin County, from our conversation with Hennepin County, is that comes from the state. So the state says, you have this much increase that you have to get to, and then Hennepin County has to verify.
It's easy to pass it.
If you're on the wall, right there.
Yep, correct.
We need this much more taxes.
Sounds like a ticket board.
I'm just repeating what we've heard.
We need a bigger surplus.
Sure, yeah, it comes from the state, not from me.
We got to build back up again.
Okay, so I will, I will look into that and see what we can do and dig around a little bit on that one. That one may come back and.
It just seems like there's a lot of benefits if we can do it ourselves or.
Sure. Sure, yeah, I mean, even if it's a club, that's fine too. I'm good with that. I'll look into it and see. Engineering, or any more questions on assessment services? I was astonished by that increase as well, so it wasn't something I was like, I love it. Engineering Department, reduction of 25,000, this is just due to historical actuals. We have engineering working on way more projects than we ever had before related to development stuff. So a lot of their time isn't just pooled into, you know, engineering time. It's actually put into related to developments, road projects, whatever else. So we just don't pay them just general engineering dollars quite so much anymore. Inspection Department, again, this is the $22,000 reduction. This is wages and benefits and then also due to costs of the reallocation of time spent from staff. CDD and senior planner had almost all their time coded to inspections. That's just the benefits and wages and then the $50,000 in professional services related to Metro West. Again, those are my best guesses. I could be totally off and wrong on those numbers, but I'm putting my best guess out there.
And that's based on lower permit numbers?
Correct. Lower permit numbers is the inspection department. So you got to link in total, inspection department and the planning department to kind of work together. So they, it's kind of what, how much time they spend. And so because we have both of those times, the planning department typically offsets the inspection department, which is what you see in the next one is increase of 25,000. So their net to zero, basically, the two wage numbers. We reallocate their time before they're spending it. And then reduction of 67,500 in professional services due to not having landform on staff full-time. Between those two professional services, that's where your reductions of, the total permit dollars is going, reduction of. Again, I said like 170,000 reduction, total difference of permit numbers, that's right, that's where it's at.
Are we spending other, other dollars not in planning with landform? Because the 67.5 doesn't seem like that buys somebody full, full-time.
So we budgeted for both the CDD director this year and professional services to be handled by landform because we had landform on staff last year, so we expected to have them on staff for over much time. And we budgeted for the CDD, Community Development Director, all of 2023. And so that's why in 2024, when we have a Community Development Director position, we no longer need those professional services because we expected to have both of them on at some point.
Yeah, that's, that's the reduction, I get that. I just, it just seems to me if, if they were here full-time and they were doing planning, that we would have spent more than 67,000.
Oh, I'm sure we have. I, I don't know, I think their bills roughly $20,000 a month? $23,000 a month, something like that? So if you multiply that by 12 months, that's 240 grand.
15, yeah.
Yeah. I did not budget for all of that in every single spot.
But the separate projects that we have them working on, like the master plan is not in that number? Or is in that number?
The master plan is included in that reduction, so we should have enough dollars in there to be able to do the master plan next year with the professional services. Again, we had some other one-off things. We did the transportation comp plan this year that we budgeted for, partly budgeted for. We have many more professional service costs than just land. There is a savings to having a Community Development Director position on staff, that are able to do those kind of things without having to do consulting costs, because those are significantly higher than internal costs, which is. Did I answer your question or no?
One question back to the engineering part, but.
Yep.
At what stage is it best to have an in-house engineer? I mean, I don't know what we spend on engineer with STANTEC.
Well.
And, and the other thing is, you probably, just say you were the guy. You probably can't do it all by yourself, right?
Correct.
It's about 30 of us a month, yeah. So say a light month, there's about 15 people involved. On an average, there's 25.
So it's not even really.
But not full-time. When you say 15 people, you mean, yeah. So how many hours a month?
FT equivalent. I forget when I ran that. It might, it might be a little dated, like three years ago. I want to say we're at about an eight FTE. I'd have to look that up to confirm.
I thought it was like, the number was 100 hours a month or something like that. I want to say it was at least five FTEs at least, because just number of the products that we have going on. And then you have to have some people who are watershed certified, some people who are stormwater certified, and we can't have everybody on staff, so. There is going to be some point where we will need that in-house engineer. But we'll always have to have some sort of backup as an additional engineer, like a WSB or a STANTEC or something else.
It's one of those specialists departments that you need those people.
Most of the other consultants go away.
No, I don't.
It's just at what point do we want to manage that with a city employee versus hiring Jason essentially.
Essentially, that is correct.
I know Jason's here, I'm gonna ask anyway. So do we have a standard that we bid out those services every three years, every five years? Just to make sure that we're going to be competitive, right, on what we're getting?
We do not.
When's the last time we bid out services like?
For my time.
It was.
It's been a while because Wink's was our STAN.
Oh, with STANTEC, then we went to Wink.
Right.
Well, that was bonus struggle before that.
Bonus struggle before that.
So it's been, it's been forever.
For all.
Yep.
So.
You'll just ask, it's normal in corporate facilities that like indirect spend every, once, between every three and five years, it just gets bid out. Even if you're happy that you have, it's just standard that you do it. And then that way you make sure you're constantly getting the best price that you should be getting for what you're doing.
Yeah, that's something historically that we've struggled with, with RFPs on all of our services. That's why we recently did the attorney and the recycling, because it was just.
I'm not unhappy, Jason, just to be clear. I just, it's one of those things that we should look at across the board of, whether it's STANTEC or Metro West or whoever, like if we haven't bid them out in a while, unless you guys look at it, you're like, no, I think we're getting a good deal. We don't want to bid out because we think it's going to cost us more, that's different.
I think we're in that situation with a few of our.
Okay, but we, we should at least.
Sometimes it's better not to ask.
Yeah, yeah, but that's my point, is if we feel that way, then internally we should all agree, like.
We can look.
With an update from Zach, like we think going out to bid is going to cost us more, so we're not going to do it, but we should at least look.
Yep, sure.
And, you know, part of the other thing with, with the lawyers and with the recycling and with, I'm going to go to something else. Taxpayers aren't footing that bill. So yeah, we should probably pay attention to it, but it's not, I don't think it's nearly as critical when you're, you're, it's a fee for service kind of thing, but.
Well, taxpayers are footing the bill for recycling.
Yep.
I mean, that's included.
That one and the lawyer, yeah.
Yeah, well, some of the lawyer's time gets charged to.
Most of the engineering time actually gets quoted to projects or.
Yeah.
Other things. I mean, there's minimal amount of their time that's honestly quoted to something other than, you know, general engineering.
But yeah, like our IT services and our.
Right. Don't disagree with your comment, though. I think it's something we look at and we can talk about.
Okay, any other questions? Otherwise, we'll get to the police, which is the biggest number of the night. Congratulations. So we're looking at an increase of, we're requesting an increase of 731,000. This includes wages and benefits. That is four new positions, so what that would mean is that they would have two promotions to sergeants, one promotion to an investigator, and then three backfilling those and one traffic car. So that's the four new positions. So there is, the 731 includes both, includes all the promotions, which is there is a difference in salaries between a current police officer, a patrol officer, sergeant, or investigator. And then a patrol officer to fill behind them, because there is an increased cost. Basically, it's, the 731 includes two sergeants and investigator, which are all paid the same amount of dollars as far as I'm aware, unless the, something different that I'm not aware of, but.
Investigator might be a little less.
And how the hell do we get to 180 grand? It's a little better than 180 grand for those four spots.
Because that, it is also increases in the union, union negotiations for all the other officers.
There's a raise in there.
The raises for all the other, the eight current cops that are on staff.
But you're still talking 100 and a half.
Yep, 100, yep, 150,000. That includes salaries and benefits. It's the rough cost for a officer with payroll.
What's the current budget?
Current budget for total?
1.6, 2.6.
I thought it was in the.
It's got to be higher.
Is it iron?
So he's looking it up.
Yeah, I'm going to look that up quick, so.
The three officers get us, always having two officers on staff even with vacations, correct? Not including the traffic cop.
So the sergeants would be night shift sergeants.
Okay.
So we'd have two on from 4:00 PM to 4:00 AM, no matter whether there was a vacation or not.
Okay.
The day shift would be determined, I do the backup along with lieutenant does backup during the day shift. So we usually, except weekends maybe, we usually have Monday through Friday, two of us on.
And tell me why you want a sergeant? Why not just have a regular Indian?
Because you want supervision over the patrol officers in the evening or overnight. That way they can ask them questions instead of our phones ringing up to a call man.
So current budget for the police is 2.186, and next year's requested is 3 million.
20 million bucks.
That's correct. 731,000 of that is related to new, new staff. And then we also have some other increases which we can't really control. Work comp, which we can't control at all.
95,000, you can't control some of that.
Can't control that at all, yeah. Motor fuels, repair and maintenance has been absolutely comical. Wellness program, which is required by the state now, or basically essentially required by the state. Property insurance, gas and electric utilities, then professional development and uniforms for the new officers. The other portion of that you can't really control, but.
And with four new officers, you're talking. And with four new officers, you're talking two or three, four, four new cars, right?
Nope.
Downward.
Uh, we have it pretty, we have it pretty much set where we should be able to.
Yep.
You got eight or nine cars now, right?
Yep. That's all we should need, I would think, for at least a year or two.
Yep. The way we have it in the rotation in our CIPA, by the time we get to the end, we do gain cars as we go along.
But it's slow.
Slowly, but so as of right now, I'm not looking at adding more vehicles.
Is that the whole, we get a free one for every three they replace thing because of the rotation?
Okay.
That's thirty percent, by the way.
What, uh, yep, the most of, the significant of all the increase this year is related to the police department.
Yeah, eight-hundred K.
Yep.
A little over, yes, again.
You got it. Yeah, it's not, we're, it's not a lack of trying. It's the fact that we need staff. Fortunately, we need police officers. We have more calls for service than we ever had before. And we have people who say, we have so much speeding going on in this town. We have so many problems, but we don't have anybody to enforce it. Unfortunately, we can't have speed cameras everywhere either, so.
The main positions that I need is the two sergeants and investigator. I need the investigator for sure. Um, and the two sergeants would be, that way we could have two on at night at all times.
Two sergeants on at night?
Yeah, it'd be on separate rotations.
So the serge, the current police officer runs five, two, two, five.
One guy would go off at ten and the guy that comes on at ten-thirty.
One would work Monday, Tuesday, every other week, and the other one would work Wednesday, Thursday.
Different sides of the week that they would work.
The schedule runs five, two, two, five. So you're on five, off five, on two, off two.
Yeah.
So that way you have flip-flopping five.
Because then when people are on vacations, the sergeant would cover their vacation.
Correct.
That works out to be about fifty percent over the whole year of that person and that person.
Yeah. Yep. Yeah. Again, and the investigator, the reason for that is because Hennepin County isn't doing it anymore.
Nope.
They're saying, you're not, we're not doing it anymore, which I think is a bunch of hocus-pocus, to be honest with you, but that's just my nice words.
They're, uh, covering, they're doing a lot of coverage for other cities because of lack of, like Golden Valley, they don't have enough officers. So Golden Valley's contracting with the county. Robbins, a couple of cities have started to contract because they don't, they can't get the officers to fill positions.
And do you think you can find four officers to fill the position?
Uh, we got a pretty good reputation.
Okay.
So we get a lot of contacts from officers working in other cities looking to come up here.
So you can always find?
We have not had a problem stealing from the.
Other communities.
Borrowing.
Other communities because of our reputation.
So there's always reasons.
Reputation as far as?
The way we take care of our troops.
Okay. I thought it was maybe you didn't have enough to do and they could just do this.
Nope, we got plenty to do.
How many calls do you get a year, chief?
Uh, right now, we're up to
That's the going way nowadays.
Six thousand nine-hundred-and-eighteen total incidents, which is up from five, about four-hundred-and-forty-nine from.
What was the number?
Six thousand nine-hundred-and-eighteen total incidents. And a hundred and three part one and part two crimes, which is your bigger crime. So our, our call load's even going up. And then with the new apartments growing online over here, with the concept plans with new apartments in other areas, we'll just see an increase in calls for service.
Are we supposed?
Sorry.
There's not going to be a decrease, I don't think. Until we start charging people.
For calls.
Because I'm the new guy, I don't know is, are we, do we hash this out now or do we wait and do it at a later meeting if we don't agree with this or?
Some next.
Yep, both.
I didn't know if the goal was to leave here. So when we get to that point, it's just smooth sailing. So we hash it out now or if the goal is to hash it out later?
This is just a prelim right now.
This is just information and probably about this time is when it starts getting hashed.
Oh, correct. Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
And, and we're going to look for the investigator position. We're going to try to work with Anokah Hennepin to try to get a part of that cost covered. We're still in talks with them to see if, because we'll stick them in the school, they'll work out of the school during the school year. So it'll be kind of a school resource officer slash investigator during the school year. So, but his main goal will be investigations. They'll just be working out of the school. So we'll have somebody in the elementary school. So that's, we're still in talks with Anokah Hennepin on that.
So we don't have an officer in the elementary school right now?
No.
So this is half the hit.
Correct.
This is where I think we're gonna have to.
I think likely, I'll, I'll do the rest of it just to talk one. And then we'll go back to here because likely we're going to end up at public safety. So the answer is going to be public safety.
What did you say?
This is half the increase.
This is where.
Yeah, this is eight-hundred K.
Yep, eight-hundred, of the one-point-seven million, eight-hundred dollars.
If we're not okay with the twenty-six percent.
Yep.
This is where we're gonna have to come back.
Correct. So we'll come back to the police. Fire department is the other bigger increase this year, most certainly. Um, and that is related to, again, wages and benefits. So the request for next year is going to be a full-time assistant chief and whatever you want to call it, assistant chief, deputy chief, I don't care. And then a part-time fire marshal to be able to help with the investigation, or not investigations, um, inspections and also review of new commercial buildings and buildings in general, along with increased hours for current on-call firefighters. So we currently have more calls for service, which means more hours. We have more people who are the newer individuals of the fire department or want to get involved and they're heavily involved in the process and they want to be here. So we are seeing more hours from those individuals as well, along with all the people that have been here for many, many years that want to be involved as well, too. So increased hours, again, related to the calls, full-time fire assistant chief and a part-time fire marshal. Uh, we do have an increase of twenty-five thousand dollars for fire state aid contribution. This is just offset with the revenue directly. So I put it in there as a number because it was above twenty grand. However, this is just a float through. Basically, we get the fire state aid from the state. And then we just hand it right after the fire relief for dollars to be put towards their pension. Increase of thirty for repair and maintenance, which we've seen a heck of a hit on this year, just with one engine, which we just approved a couple of minutes ago. Increase of twelve thousand professional development and then five for uniforms, twelve for, five for communications, and that's related to the new radios that we have in twenty-twenty-three, and ten thousand for contract services.
Does that repairs and maintenance include the regular scheduled maintenance that we've asked to be added in?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Which is six thousand dollars.
Correct.
So that thirty thousand dollar increase in our repair maintenance includes that. Yes.
That's six thousand. I thought it was a thousand a month.
No, a thousand per piece.
Per vehicle.
Per vehicle.
Yep. So that was a thousand dollars per vehicle. So we have six, essentially six, six vehicles that would need to be serviced and that's.
Okay, yeah, that's actually what I understood, too. I must have missed it.
Six thousand dollars.
Six thousand.
Which I think is
It's even cheaper. It's not a thousand a month. It's a thousand.
It's an absolute steal.
Oh, you're five hundred a vehicle?
It's five hundred a month.
Five hundred a month, yeah.
I think you're a thousand.
Which is essentially.
That's what I thought it was.
Yeah, it's cheaper, yeah.
So main increases here again, wages and benefits is a hundred and eighty thousand. That is the new, or full-time assistant chief and a part-time fire marshal. That is mostly the increase other than that. And we can go the budget for fire. Next question. Is.
You got a question?
No, I just assumed it'll be the next question. How much is their budget? Last year was, or twenty-twenty-three, six hundred thousand. Eight ninety-one is the increase, or the request for twenty-twenty-four. Total budget for the fire department.
Sixty-eight, six-hundred-and-eighty-three?
Six hundred thousand is this year's current budget, and next year is eight ninety-one, so a total of two-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars. Rough numbers.
But some of that is coincidental stuff.
Some of this stuff, again, something we can't control, like twenty-five, thirty, twelve. I mean, those things we just can't control. The only, the things, the main things we can control are wages and benefits, which is the new place.
We are seeing a, a really big increase in repairs and maintenance on all across the board. Everybody's getting it. And is there, and I don't know if this is, I mean, it's probably too late to even talk about it now, I guess, but is some of that coming from the fact that because like you've had a couple of plow trucks on that CIP for the last two or three years?
Yep.
Is, is some of that coming from, we're not getting the truck, the new truck that we want? But wouldn't it be beneficial for us? I mean, there's, there's trucks on lots. I mean, you may not be getting what you want, but it's still better than putting money into an old truck.
To a degree, yeah.
So I think to me, to me, we should be looking at some of that. Like your one-ton, your, your tandem axle? A year ago, that was two-hundred-and-fifty grand, I think, and now it's three-fifty.
Yeah.
The difference is you can't just go into the dealership and ask for a tandem axle, uh.
Yeah, but you can, there's equipment guys all over. And I mean, I'll use my, my prime example is Ritchie Brothers. I mean, they're nationwide. You, you can find something out there if you, if you, it may not be exactly what you want. But it might help get you by.
With the plow trucks, I think that, you know, the equipment that we got, yes, it costs a little bit more to maintain it. But at least we know what that equipment is and it's set up the way that we need it. And as far as the plow equipment and all the electronics and cameras and everything that's in there. And with stuff like the hook and box truck, we, that, that's set up for our boxes and everything like that. It's got, you know, specific cameras and controls in it for controlling all those things. So you might not get all that stuff in a used piece of equipment. And I think that, you know, the mileage on our tandem is, you know, probably lower than something that you're going to buy that contractor's been driving around, you know, hard for however many years delivering, you know, blacktop and all that kind of stuff. So in a way, I feel that, you know, it's better to keep what we have and maintain it. I, we will be getting new, new trucks in a couple of years. I'm reliably told that, you know, we can, our order will be going in in September and there's a twelve-month delivery on that. So I think that if we can keep these trucks going for that length of time, then we'd be in a much better place.
Are you talking about used stuff or are you talking about new stuff that's just one-offers?
There might be a, I mean, I'm sure you can Google a, a, a one-ton plow truck with, with an eight-foot blade on it. I mean, a couple of years back, you had slotted fifty grand for that truck. You can't touch that truck for.
It was seventy for the one-ton. So we had it slotted in at seventy. I had the F-three-fifties in at fifty thousand, and I talked to the dealer today. The prices haven't gone up substantially on those fifty thousand. It's going to be still in the ballpark.
Really?
Yeah, and they're going to be, um, I've got an order going in for those next week, and they're a six-month delivery out now. So that.
So it's better.
It's getting better. It's just been a long time to get there.
And I, I looked at for squad tires last year, buying them because people were finding them out in Kentucky and Texas and all that, but you're paying top dollar for them. You're not getting a discount at all. So instead of what, thirty-one thousand, you're paying forty-eight, forty-nine on each vehicle.
Yeah, because you're buying it off a lot.
Yep.
No, I get that.
You're paying top dollar for them.
I think some of that, if you called when we had the, me about the CIP, we said that the trucks were put in at three-hundred-and-fifty thousand because that's where we think the top line is going to be. They might come in under that one, so I'm getting the actual figures on those. But we inflated the prices on those a little bit to be on the safe side.
I just, to me, the, the repair number has been skyrocketing all twenty-twenty-three.
Yeah, I think.
Well, the parts are probably.
Parts are expensive.
Everything's gone out. And so I think in the labor.
But if you're running a ten-year-old truck, you're, you're asking for trouble.
Yeah, there comes that, especially on a car, comes that point of like, how much, if you're putting four hundred bucks a month into your car, you might just get a brand-new car, right? At that point? Like, I, I get what you're saying. Yeah.
I think the conversation came up once during the CIP one was about the Bobcat, where we just kept putting money in this thing. It's like, we're just dumping money in this thing. We got to get out of it. So for one final thing, and now we're going to trade it in, and now we're going to do this every year program. And it's just, it's, it makes sense. We, I, all the department heads I know will continue to do that. And repair and maintenance sucks for sure, but sometimes it's better to pay five thousand dollars to get something back. You know what you got, then pay, okay, now we're going to pay two-hundred-and-fifty thousand instead of three-hundred-and-fifty thousand for a new car, but now we don't know what we have. And then five thousand miles, it breaks again. There's some, there's some a little bit of both. But I agree, repairs and maintenance has gotten astronomical and it's, I wish I could tell anybody differently, but the answer might be just getting a full-time mechanic in here, but that's just trying to figure out exactly what's going to be worthwhile for repairs and maintenance because we send a lot of stuff out.
You can, you can, for, for that, you, you, I'll just throw this out there. You could take every vehicle that we have and put it on a schedule over at Hutner's and, and he can take care of it.
Yeah.
I mean, a guy could do that. To me, maintenance is the deal. I mean.
And some of our stuff, the older stuff was stored at the old shop. So we didn't have, it was stored outside a lot of the time. We didn't have any opportunity to hose them down after sanding and so on. And so there, a lot of that stuff is covered in rust. And rust is a lot of the issues with some of that stuff, just stuff rotting out on it. So, I mean, we can, we've got, we can patch those things together now, and I'm hopeful that, you know, by next year, we'll be in a much better place with, you know, new equipment coming on board.
Put it in the car wash.
We've got a car wash now.
Automated one. Automated. They're only done with their route. They just drive right through and park it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, leaving that stuff sit out. Just every time I drove by, I'm like, what the hell am I doing?
I don't say that because that's.
I know. I think we're paying the price right now.
Even a pool roof.
Yeah.
Style would have, would have been getting it out of the sun, whatever.
Okay, any questions on the fire department? Okay.
I have a comment there.
Yep.
I'll just put it out there. I mean, to me, and I emailed you about this. To me, that part-time, the, the full-time assistant chief, I see way more value in making some sort of a schedule to get on-call firefighters so that you're paying them extra money so that they stay home this weekend or this, this week, so that they're around. That a guy can count on them. You pay them extra money that they're on call.
I tried that, honestly.
Oh, duty crew. You're talking duty crew.
However you call it.
No, a duty crew would be, would be there, right?
So I did come up with a.
There's no try about it. You just make a schedule and then it, it, that's what you do. It's just like.
And the schedule falls on a face because there's nobody to volunteer to do the work. Can't just board people to sign up doing stuff.
Yeah, and, and I did put together a plan that said that, and Zach and I talked about it probably last fall, honestly, maybe a little bit later in November-ish, but a duty crew program, so to speak, duty crew, I air quotes, it's quasi-whatever, where I paid somebody twenty-five dollars to stay in the city, so to speak, and then they're also paid their hourly rate to respond to calls.
Yeah, yeah.
And more or less, everyone said, yeah, no, I'm not going to stay home for twenty-five dollars in my hourly rate. It, it restricts my freedom to go do X, Y, and Z. So I abandoned that plan. And actually, even from a duty crew model, we had this discussion maybe a couple of meetings ago where Matt Hackman, one of our new lieutenants at Station One, he said even a duty crew model from his perspective wasn't, um, wasn't interested in because right now, he has the flexibility. Outside of it, with the duty crew model, you would schedule kind of to your point, Scott, a little bit. They'd have the ability to go, okay, here's the month, pick your time and whatever. His thought was it was better for him to not be tied to a specific time, day, week, whatever, where he could just come and go at his leisure, so to speak, with this schedule. So it's been a little bit all over the, all over the place trying to come up with something that was appealing to the membership as. So I, yeah, we, we've tried to go down that road to.
I just don't see a whole lot of value in having two guys at the top and nobody underneath.
Well, I can, well, so to that point, I broke down my job into five areas. Command, finance, logistics, operations, and planning. So if you look at these, command fundamentally is emergency response. If I go on a call right now, it's about an hour of my time typically for a call. Finance, that's budgeting, grant writing, which I haven't had an opportunity to do. Then there's logistics, maintenance of equipment, pure, pure, procure, I can't say the word.
Procurement.
Thank you, of equipment. Um, and then you look at operations. You know, you talk about halftime inspections and/or assistant chief. Um, operations, new construction plan review, existing building fire inspections, public education, citywide OSHA training, right-to-know bloodborne pathogens. We're not currently doing that. Fire department monthly training, Northwest Suburban Fire Academy as it relates to recruitment and retention, EMT or EMR training, recruitment and retention overall, and then planning is emergency operations plan, which we're not working on currently. Yep, there is an overarching Hennepin County emergency operations plan, but it's not specific to the community of Dayton, which is important. Continuity of government plan. Continuum of government plan, and David probably is familiar with some of these terminologies of, you know, we need to have a continuity of government plan in place. So if this facility does not exist tomorrow after a tornado, every person as an employee still wants to get paid. So we still have to have that ability to function as a city. Public work still needs to be able to do their job. Zach needs to do his job and so forth. We have, that plan does not exist today. Burn permits. The other thing is, and those are just high-level things. When you look at other communities around us, regardless of Maple Grove, Champlin, Rogers, it doesn't matter. They all started out as a Dayton at some point. I am not efficient at trying to accomplish everything that I just discussed. It's, I go from one thing, and I have no problem doing this, and I'll put it over here. And then I jump over to here to something else, or maybe I go to a call. And then sometimes legitimately, things get forgotten about, because I'm trying to get so many different things done. But we need to start looking at, you know, expanding the operations to be able to, you know, I'll give you a recent example. Say from an inspection perspective, Minnesota Towing, we got really lucky last week. We would have been a Becker fire, we're this far away from having a Becker fire for the recycling place, so we're at Minnesota Towing. They had a motorhome that came in, I don't know what they did to it. It started on fire, and luckily it was outside and not inside. If it was inside, it'd been a completely different story right now. And the place is a bigger disaster than when I was there last time. On the north side of the building that's facing 81, there's just piles of stuff. But that's the ability for the fire department to go and do current building inspections. And really get people as we do change of ownership or use changes when the people buy, like a machine shop. And then trying to keep track of that. So it's all those types of things. I do a lot of things, but I don't do everything well like I should.
Yeah, I do the same thing.
You know, dabbling in 20 different things. So it's, it becomes inefficient over time.
Yeah. But no matter what you do, you can't fix everything, so.
No, you can't, but we need to start, we need to, I'll just be honest, we need to be proactive instead of reactive. I mean, you talk about proactive, I mean, you're trying to talk with Marty about, we should probably purchase these because we're trying to save dollars. All the things that I talked about is being proactive and trying to make sure that we're, have a safe community for all of our employees as well as the community itself.
Yeah, but the Becker thing, I mean, if it happens, it happens. I mean, there's nothing you can do to stop it.
Sure there is.
Sure there is. There's, it's pre-planning. There's inspections. There's all these things.
You're gonna pre-plan and not bring the motorhome in? If the motorhome is there and it starts on fire, that's just what happened.
Okay, so let's.
If the guy's got it in the building, I mean, you can't stop that.
No, you can't. But I mean, let's take it from a different perspective. I got to be involved in, an officer involved shooting in, in Brooklyn Center. So I'll speak on, Paul can chime in whenever he likes. We have no, if that happens tomorrow, what do you think it looks like in this community? We have no plan to respond to that.
We just had it happen a couple of years ago.
But bigger picture though, now, it's probably more prevalent. I'm talking something that's on the news, you've got, where you have to have National Guard and those types of events, types of thing. So it's, it's bigger type, picture type stuff that, you know, we're becoming a bigger community. We need to start to plan for this stuff.
I don't disagree. I just think that we're gonna have an issue soon. At 26%, I'm pretty sure we're gonna have an issue. And this is a quarter of it. And I agree, we can, we can continue to add staff and more staff is good, but at some point, you know, there's a crossover where the value isn't there. So we can always increase X. We can always add people for one reason or another. And every time, you know, I've been watching things for a long time, and there's always reasons to bring more people on staff, always. And at some point, you gotta look at what you're spending versus what you're doing. And that's, I think, we're just gonna, we're gonna have to look at these two numbers. And figure out a way to reduce it. That's my opinion. So.
Sure.
Hey, to me, the, the fire department is way better today than it was 18 months ago.
Sure.
And that's, that's good. That's, that's an improvement. And no matter what you do, to me, you can't stop.
No, we, we, I completely agree. You can't stop regardless of it's, tornado comes, you have, you have to be reactive to it. But we need to be better prepared in order to respond to it. I mean, that, that's the reality of it, is the expansion. The, the thing that. My frustration is this, to be honest, is that, and this isn't picking on me, Scott, but you always say, that's a want versus a need. And the part that I don't understand holistically is when we look at what's a want and a need, but you really understand the operations of the organization. To say that that's a want or a need, that's the part I get frustrated with. Because I don't, as I've said this before, the big red truck goes down the road, but there's many things that need to make it happen before the truck can go down the road. Recruitment, retention, all the things that I listed.
I don't disagree with all that stuff, but, I mean, to me, this community has got a very good fire department. It, it's better than, I'll hold on, it's probably better than Hill City's fire department.
But where else?
Well, it's, it's, no, I get that. I get that, but we're not in Minneapolis either.
And Hill City's still the good old boy, where the kids and everybody else still.
Pitches in, yeah. But, I mean, to, to me, the whole Becker thing, I mean, if it happens, it happens. Hopefully it doesn't happen, but if it does.
But you gotta understand, I think.
I don't lose any sleep over it. I mean, shit happens. That's just the way it is.
But I think to that point, the Becker, you gotta understand why they got kicked out of Minneapolis, and they wound up in Becker. I mean, there's, there's backstory on that too, because Minneapolis was now like sick and tired of dealing with fires because it took up so much time. The environmental issues and all that stuff that come along with it, they're just like, hey, you know, sorry, but you gotta go. There's a before and after. And I really think in that statement, we're not really looking at like what leads up to it. We're just like, well, if it happens, it happens. Well, that's not very proactive. It's very much just like.
So how do you stop, how do you stop that from happening?
Well, it's a building and, or.
So you're saying you go over there and you lay the hammer down to the guy that's running the building and say, hey, all those tires or all that, that barrel of oil there, you gotta get rid of it.
Yeah, yeah. Conditional use permit says that you're working within this. So I see that other things are going on, so hey.
I get it, and there's, there's a comeback for that, but.
I'm not looking for a comeback, I'm looking for education. Like, educate me on the matter then, I guess, and then let everybody else.
I, I hope the council understands that. I think with all the department directors, and they can chime in whenever they want, this is coming from me, is that. We put a budget together. We're not putting together a bunch of wants. We're putting together a reasonable budget based on the expansion of the programs, the expansion of the city, and based on a need basis. It's not a want, it's truly a need.
So you, you think 26% in one year is reasonable?
Yes. Because what, I'll, I'll tell you what my belief is, and my belief is this. We can't always go down, Dennis, at 3.3.
We haven't gone down in probably 10 years.
But we're at, we're not even close to the surrounding communities based on the levy increase. We're sitting at 3.3. Last year, Zach, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but most places were about 7%.
Oh, they were higher than that.
No, 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 we were not at 3, you mean 3.3 increase?
3.3% increase on our levy.
That's the levy. We spent, our spending went up almost 12.
Uh, yeah, so again, we reallocated levy dollars.
If it's a spending enough, but we have more people in the city, so you'd expect, like, we have.
Yeah.
If you think about like, if you put like a business, if you think like a business, right? You now have more customers, you're gonna spend more to serve those customers. So like spending, the dollar amount is gonna have to go up as the community grows.
Absolutely.
It's just, we, you can't imagine that, oh, we went up by 1,000 homes in three years and spending's gonna go down over the, you know, that. And then after that, because there's, it takes time for all that to build up, right?
And we never had that.
Like, the spending has to go up in order to compensate for that.
And that's why I said early on, and, and as long as everybody understands what that capacity number means, I'm okay with it going up by the growth.
That's where we're at right now, right, Zach?
No, we're not.
Oh, God, no.
We're well past that.
We are, we are at the growth number right now.
Yeah, it's exactly what I meant on Monday.
Would you, okay, I'll, I'll clarify that and say, the growth number is two numbers combined.
Yes.
It is both new construction.
Yes.
And change in value from previous construction.
And the new construction.
The new construction number is 15.65 or 16%.
And I, I.
And the rest is related to increased values of both commercial, industrial, residential.
Which results in zero city requirements, serious city services.
But those home values are going up because the, the cost of goods is going up. The cost of goods are going up.
The value of somebody's home affects the city?
No, no, not at all.
I was talking.
No, what, what I'm saying is, okay, so if some, somebody's home value is going up, that usually correlates to everything else's cost is going up as well. So like, you look at inflation, right? So home value, so, so to say like, oh, well, people should pay the same as their tax are they paid last year. Even if their home va, even though their home value went up.
Yep.
Their home value went up, and we don't control that, the county controls that. But part of the, the methodology behind that then is that, okay, everything that, that, if, if there was no growth, we would still have to see an increase because we have to continuously replace things and go through things. So you're gonna have to see an increase that way as well.
No. And here's how, what I say about that is, the new growth we have is far more efficient than our current layout. Every house that goes in sits on 80 feet of frontage, or it used to sit on 200 or 300 feet of frontage. So all this stuff is more efficient to run. There's efficiencies in, in growth, size efficiencies. It's, it's not a linear thing.
We don't, we don't disagree on the new construction piece. I'm just saying that.
I will say there are some inefficiencies to having people so close together. There's more risk for fire, the more risk for public safety, because the new construction is different than old construction.
But we haven't realized.
We have realized that, but there is, there is a cost to that because they're closer together, their new construction.
It'd be realized.
Yeah. Until we have a fire and then, yeah, we can realize it. But I, it's more efficient to serve those homes, sure, from a public works standpoint. But we get closer to other homes, so it typically revolves in, there's more neighbor, neighbor disputes with each other, like more problems with neighbors. Like, I don't like the fact you have all your crap on my yards, and now there's more calls for service for police.
Sure, but we have that, yeah.
But there, there are some inefficiencies and inefficiencies. So depending on how you look at it, you can say, well, the increase in all of the budget items, except for the increase in people, are related to old legacy homes. Which, because that costs more to repair and maintenance items, just like they're costing them more to repair their hot water heater, costs them more to get electricity to their house. So if you wanna break them down, you could say, all of the new fire full-time people are related to new construction. And then all of the costs of increases related to supplies, repairs and maintenance, insurance is related to the legacy homes. I don't really like doing that. It doesn't, it doesn't bode well, because everyone's gotta pay the same bill. I mean, the residents pay one bill to the taxes the best we can.
And all that does is create division, where we have this like, well, forget the new people that moved in, they suck.
Yeah, correct. And that's not what I want to do.
It's not good, it's not good for the community to have that mentality. It's also not good, because candidly, there are people like myself, for example, who's, I grew up in Dayton, and to move back, it's hard to find a home in Dayton if you wanna live here, unless it's a new home. And so, like, to say people don't belong for whatever reason, that's not a good mentality. And to, to add that division to it, I don't think is helpful for building a strong community.
Correct. And I, and again, I don't want to do that. So what we looked at is.
Why would we do that?
Why would we do that?
That's what, so you're trying to do, you're trying to say, the new people, the new home should pay for everything, and is this your home should pay for everything?
No, 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 no. You're saying new construction allows for new services. That's what he's saying.
Okay.
What, any increase in value, if your home goes up 100 grand, it doesn't cost the city any more money to, to, to operate because of that increase.
But I still agree.
But that, that is going up the value because everything's going up the value.
People have two or three kids after they move into an existing home. You know, they might come in there with one kid or as a single couple, and then they have twin kids, which increases the cost for service.
Doesn't create any new need for the community.
Correct. But the way the methodology works everywhere, not just in Dayton, is that the value goes up and, because all values are going up. And so their values go up, so they're paying more taxes because the costs are going up.
Oh, it's not like, we, we had, we had almost 30% increases in some of the homes.
Yeah, I think that's, I think it's across the board. There's some that had 30% and there's some that had zeros. I mean, there, there are some that had zeros or negatives, because we saw them on the.
Yeah, some went backwards.
Someone went backwards. And so.
It's easy to pick extremes. I'm just saying, in general, that's the methodology that goes.
I'm just saying, if our new construction goes up just 15%, that's how much money you guys can spend.
Can I, I just want to better understand. So like, in what Zach had said.
It makes sense. To you it does, yes.
You have a, a house, whatever the value is. So then, cost of goods and services, like increase of 5 to 10% in whatever goods or service that we.
Groceries, gas.
Just to run the city goes up.
That doesn't cost the city anything. It costs me.
Motor fuels though, we gotta pay motor fuels like everybody else does. We gotta pay insurance like everybody else does.
Yeah, but the bulk of what we're talking about here is bodies.
Correct, yep.
Okay, let's get over the, the increases in, in inflation. It's bodies.
Yep.
But I, I agree with, I agree with Gary, is when I set my personnel budget, the bodies I'm asking for is, I'm setting it up for the best service to the citizens of Dayton and to our department. That's how I set mine. It's not a need, it's a want, or it's a.
It's not a want.
Want. It's a need to be the most proficient and service our city the way we need to service it.
Okay.
I'm starting to rub off on you guys anyway.
Want, need, and want.
It's, it's maybe a good idea. It, let's say, let's, let me ask you this. If the per, if, if the optimal setting would double the budget, 100% increase, would it be a good idea?
Depends on how bad it is now.
In other words, there's a value to it.
There's a, we, I don't like the term wants and needs. It's a, it's how you prioritize it. So, so what, what, in my mind, it is a priority that we always have two cops on, for multiple reasons, for citizen safety, for other things. Like, in my mind.
If you sat in here and watched those meetings over the years, you'd hear that all the time. We wanna get here, we wanna get here, and we wanna get here. Every time it's justified, and, and it's a reason to progress like that.
Yeah. Progression's not a bad thing.
I, I'm saying it is.
So, so, but, but what I hear, let me phrase this properly. What some people, I'm not gonna point out anyone in particular, because I don't, I don't, I'm not trying to point out, or I'm not trying to subvertly point out anything. Somebody may say, to me, it's not a priority that we have two officers on at all times. And that's okay. That doesn't make it a want or a need, because it's neither a want nor a need. It's just some people prioritize that higher than other people do.
Yes.
And that's where the want, need thing, like we talked about when we had the set, needs to go out the window. Because it's not about wants and needs. You could argue that anything is a want versus a need. And you could argue anything's a need versus a want. It's how you prioritize it as an individual.
And I, I think it probably separates along, and I don't disagree with you, with people. I think want versus need is probably more applicable to, not to pick on him, but.
Marty.
Always you're right, always you're right.
I mean, because, because you look at something and you say, well, you know, we can get increased utility out of this thing if we own it.
Yep.
Except when you look at dollar amount, you say, well, it really doesn't make sense to pay.
The, the street sweeper was a correct example.
Yes, yeah. Bodies is probably exactly what you're saying, a priority.
It's what, it's what quality of service do you expect as a citizen here, and how do you prioritize that?
Yes.
Yep. So the last part of it, I just wanna make sure we touch on every department before we, and I know we talked a lot about fire, but. Public Works is the next one, and Public Works and Parks go together because they're the same department. Basically, 73,000 for wages and benefits for Public Works, and wages and benefits in Parks went up 67. The reason for that is because of two new part-time people, which are paid, I think we said, 25 or something dollars an hour at 31 hours a week, so that they don't have benefits. And then step increases, which were talked about in the unit contract, so they were substantial again, so there'll be another 7% increase in step increases based on the unit contract. So that is why there's such an increase there, because part of it, or most of it, is unit contract negotiated already.
Just so I know, as I read this, you're taking those two part-time employees and splitting them up between two departments? You're not asking for four part-time employees, right?
Yes, correct.
That's how I.
I, I just wanted to make sure I read it. I, I heard you when we had the thing, and then.
The only, only two new part-time employees, they're to split evenly, roughly 50/50, because part of them will be plowing, part they'll be working on mowing, depending on what season it is. And again, it's gonna ebb and flow. We're gonna use 31 hours. It might be 28, it might be 31, but it's gonna be roughly 31.
I just wanted to verify.
Two part-time, total. Sorry.
Thank you.
Um, I should have wrote that in there, and I apologize.
Yeah, PT means no benefit.
Yeah, correct. PT means no benefits, which means 31 hours or less.
It's huge, yeah.
Yep. And so that's a huge increase difference between those two. Other ones, again, motor fuels, operating supplies, repairs and maintenance is astronomical for Marty, and it's not because I'm picking on him, but just because of repair and maintenance. He's got a lot, he's got a lot of equipment. Professional services, 23,000 and 17,000 for general and work comp. Insurance has gone up astronomical. They're guessing between 10 to 15% at a minimum, and police is about 25. I'm surprised it's not higher as well, but that's what they gave me. So again, looking at total, all the results are about 1.7, 1.7 million dollars of a tax levy increase. We could talk about that and discuss it. I'm sure we'll have to have more meetings and discussions, which is fine. The total reduction in the net tax rate, again, I don't have, one thing I don't have right now, they don't have fiscal disparities. So fiscal disparities is that one number that, it adjusts our tax rate though. But again, it's a relative number of, how much do we give into the pot of fiscal disparities, which is a, some sort of anomaly that Hennepin County or somebody uses, I don't have a clue. And then gives us back a number of how much we get back. Rough, there is a decrease, however, it's roughly steady for the tax rate, 35.5. Right now, we're at 35.59 from 2023. Thirty-five point five, right now we're at thirty-five point five nine from twenty twenty-three. And I only talked about anything that related less than twenty thousand. There's a bunch of little items, they're like, oh, negative five, negative one, negative three, five thousand increase. Those aren't worth hashing out and they're mostly light items related to.
You didn't have the capacity in here, right?
I did not have the capacity in here, no, so.
Do you remember what it was?
Um, yep, so basically, and, and I have it up on the screen here now, so I'll do my best to zoom in so you can see it, so. Um, the top line is commercial, industrial, so that's when we saw the most increase on, sixty-three percent. This one is apartments, I believe. The apartment buildings, fifty-three to sixty-one. We only have one apartment building, so that's what Balsam Apartments face. Um, this is residential, just twenty-one percent. This is farmland, agricultural, um, which is not surprising, as we have less agricultural land than we did before. And then this is other, which basically means wetland, a pond, a few green acres or something like that, you get lumped into the other.
But the overall is.
Twenty-seven percent, just short of that, and these are updated numbers as of eight one, so these are updated numbers as of like.
So this is just something that I've noticed over the years is, the budget proposals always seem to match the capacity.
Yep, and again, this year.
That's not just coincidence.
No.
This year was not, I would say it was more coincidence than you think, but there was some decrease to say, we need to keep the tax rate at the same or less, most certainly. Again, that, that was based on the fact that we had all of these increases coming from.
Higher numbers?
And to, to be honest with you, he doesn't tell us what, we just put our budget proposals in. We don't even know what these numbers are.
He doesn't say you get.
But you gotta be saying.
Our job is to fight for our department, and your job is to fight for the.
How the process works, we have, I say, put the numbers in, so I give them the budget, they put it in, and each one of the department heads does each one of them, and they, none of the, either one of them know anything about any of the department's budgets. And then I meet with them individually and say,
Yep.
justify why you need these things, and then they go through and justify them. And sometimes I'll go, okay, that's too much based on historical data, or that's too little based on historical data. That needs to be up more. And then I handle like insurance, payroll, things that they have no control over whatsoever, so they give me operating supplies, uniforms, motor fuels, all that stuff.
I guess, so, so.
It was, it was likely higher.
For example, eighty, thirty percent on police and thirty percent on fire, um, we've never seen that number before that I remember.
Yep.
We've seen in the twenties. We've seen, so thirty percent.
Of, of each individual's department budget you're talking, yes, that's correct, yep.
And so you pull that back so that the number you knew was gonna hit.
I wanted to make sure that, um, I made sure to meet with all the department heads first, and then I said, okay, let's evaluate those, and then I gave them all their numbers back, and said, here's what your numbers are.
But it, it couldn't have been historical, because we've never seen these numbers this high.
Historical ones, the reason for the big increases is related to new staff.
Yep.
The, the biggest increase is if we didn't have new staff in there, we would have pretty much the same increases you've seen historically.
Yep. But I'm getting at though, is you pulled that down to the current capacity.
Yep, to say, and make sure that at least the tax rate does not go up.
That was okay. I mean, that went.
What, what do you mean?
Well.
What do you mean that went? It went through me? Yeah, yep.
So they're still at thirty, which is definitely more higher than, than they've historically been.
Correct.
And you, so you stopped at that point.
Nope, I didn't, I didn't say, oh, it has to be thirty is the max you can have for an increase. What I said is.
What I'm getting at is the push-pull ended up at capacity.
Yes, correct, that's for me. That's what I'm saying, is that I, I am not comfortable, as the city administrators say, even come to the council with something that says the tax rate's gonna increase next year.
Right.
That's my limit of, okay, the tax rate's not gonna increase.
You want them to stay within that number.
Correct, here's my tax rates, the tax rate, the tax rate's not gonna go up, which means if your house is worth five hundred thousand this year,
Right.
and your house is worth five hundred thousand next year, you're gonna pay the exact same dollars in taxes.
Except, it's not.
But it, but I didn't, I didn't go into his office and go, I want two cops, and he goes, I, no, I think you should go for four. I went into his office and I wanted four cops.
Yeah, you told us that two months ago. Yeah, yeah. I don't care about that part.
Exactly that, is if your house is worth, I know, again, if your valuation changed, I can't control that.
Yeah.
But you can't control the tax they pay.
Yeah.
Like.
Through the rate.
Through the rate, that's correct. And that's what I mean, if the rate stays the same, and your house value stays the same, you will pay the exact same dollars in taxes next year.
Or if the values up, and the rate comes down, they'll be the same.
Correct, yep, exactly, yep. But again, I, I can't control the valuation of your change of your valuation, so then fortunately, I can't say, well, because Travis's went up ten percent and yours went up twenty percent, let's be the middle fifteen.
I get all that, but I, I just talk about averages.
If you've lived in the city, say, for, I don't know, ten years, and the services in the city get better,
Yep.
do you feel you should pay the similar taxes you've always paid if the services are getting better in the city?
The people don't, I'll guarantee, if you ask a hundred people in this city, they'll, about services, they're not gonna know one year from the next. They don't care.
As long as when they call nine-one-one, we show up.
Services show up, yeah.
That, that's true, I'll, I'll agree with that.
I can, I can guarantee you, these neighborhoods, if we don't show up in five minutes, I get a phone call.
I mean, water's a great example. Water quality was really good when I was here as a kid, and then it went down. And it's almost, Marty, getting to the point where it's back up again.
It's the same water. It's the same water.
Really, I had well water as a kid, now the house my, I grew up in has city water, it's not the same water.
We don't need to get it at all.
So, not the same water.
It's identical. I don't know what, doesn't it?
Uh, here's a, here's a, here's a deal that, to me, to me, that we gotta look at, and, and it surprises me that this isn't done, and maybe the numbers are just not compiled. This asphalt study that we're doing, they completed that in July.
I have it written down.
You already have it?
No, I have it written down. Same question.
What happens if that thing shows, we need fifteen million dollars over the next ten years for the roads? And this pavement management budget has got six hundred grand in it, and we have to have one point two in there. That throws everything out of whack.
It does. Don't disagree.
So why don't we have that study compiled already and, and done?
I'll, I'll give you another one. What happens next year when everything falls apart and we have all these new bodies?
Yeah.
And, and just so everybody knows, and again, it's me one out of five, but if a manager ends up laying people off, that's on that manager.
Yep, I disagree.
The study will be done in September, so we should have that stuff for that.
Before this budget is finalized.
Correct.
I mean, otherwise, otherwise somebody's keeping something underneath.
We got about five minutes here before six thirty, so I wanna make sure everyone knows. What we're looking today is to get it out of discussion. We will have, again, as long as we're gonna need more discussion, for sure. But either it's gonna be, have to be on the twenty-second of August, or it's gonna have to be on the twelfth of September, or we have to have a separate work session. So that's the other option we have. We don't have some other options.
Sounds like, I don't mind, these are fun.
Okay, so do what? So, so that's the main thing. The next thing is, okay, so we are setting the preliminary levy. This does not mean that the budget is finalized by any means, but we are setting the cap. This is the number that's gonna go on people's tax statements.
We're gonna get this sorted out before.
We need to make sure, if, we need to have the council comfortable with the number that goes out on the tax statements before September. That's the main thing. In my, job as a city administrator and finance director is to say, if you're okay with the number that goes out on the tax statements, then we're okay. We can always drop it. We can always decrease it, and I know what the mayor's gonna say is, it never goes down.
It never does.
But it can go down.
It can, sure.
It can.
An asteroid could hit us right.
Which it did go down, I will say, the last two years it has gone down.
It did, but accidentally, through the, through the.
Well, accidentally, or.
What, what is it, served to.
Coincidentally.
So, so real quick, I've got a running out of time too.
Yep.
We also talked about the EDA fund. They have a bunch of money they haven't been using.
Yep.
I, I would argue, I don't know if you give them a hundred thousand dollars again next year when they haven't really used a lot of it.
Is that on there?
Yep, so the, the levy is on there.
Point that out. The other thing, um, is we don't really have an emergency fund, so like, if all of a sudden the air conditioner breaks on City Hall.
Yeah, we do.
Do we?
We do not have a.
We've got, we've got, we've got money in a lot of these funds.
Oh, you mean like in the.
Four, five hundred grand sitting there that we haven't bought trucks for.
Sitting in funds because we have an emergency fund of money.
Correct, yeah.
But those are already allocated for other things, is my point, versus if we had a fund that we put fifty thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars a year way in, and just till it hit a certain point, and then we just had it in case, we had an emergency.
You're gonna need a slush fund, I don't disagree.
Yeah, we, I have a slush fund for my own personal funds. I think it makes sense.
Didn't we have that inter-fund loan thing?
Yep, that's the one where all the dollars are sitting at for the four oh nine temporary financing fund, which is where the building purpose dollars. And the reason we haven't used those dollars is because we're still under litigation for those.
Well, we're okay now.
We're still under litigation for those. Thank you very much.
Can't talk about that.
So, so under litigation, so that is why, so that is why those are still there.
So those are the two things I just thought were worth bringing up with the EDA, and having, having a slush fund in case something does come up that.
Okay, it sounds like August twenty-second, we'll have another work session, five o'clock start, makes more sense for everybody, because it's gonna be, it sounds like, we're not at a point that we're comfortable with, at least from what I can gather.
No.
And then we can decide from there, if we need to have another work session before the September twelfth meeting, or the September twelfth meeting, we have a discussion, which we'll find too.
Can you do a favor before then, for me guys? Could you let him know what you.
Yep, what you feel, it'd be great.
From each one of you, so we can.